indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Watzl.
Full call.
Toth.
Here.
Obidorf.
Here.
Echol.
Here.
Marquette. Ruse.
Here.
Heben.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Motion to excuse Mr. Marquette.
Second. All those in favor of excusing Mr. Marquette, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the March 27, 2023 Regular Council Meeting?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor of approving the minutes from March 27, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Oh, I should abstain, too.
It doesn't pass.
Got three: Obidorf, Echol, and Ruse.
Cast the deciding vote.
It's all good. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for the April 10, 2023 Regular Council Meeting?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor of approving the agenda for April 10, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Committee reports this evening. None? Okay, report of the mayor and administrator, I'll defer to Allison this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to do a very quick presentation of all of the good things that we have going on here in Rossford. So I do this every year for the RBA, and I did that this last month for the RBA. So the mayor asked me to do it tonight for you guys. So this is like an update of the city for 2023. So first of all, we'd like to have many thanks for the continued support from Rossford City Council members, and that's Carolyn Zukowski, Echol, Chris Heben, Greg Marquette, Larry Obidorf, Brennan Reynolds, Robert Ruse, and Bob Toth, and Robert Watzl as the council clerk. And for anybody that wouldn't know who Team Rossford was, of course, it's Mayor Neil McKinnon, the law director Kevin Heben, the director of development Todd Odette, our public works director Tyler Cole, our finance director Chris Kirk, Todd Kitzler, our chief of police, Josh Dreward, the fire chief, and Tony LaDesma, Toby LaDesma, the director of Parks and Rec, and myself. And a little bit about our safety services, that's usually something that citizens are most concerned with here in Rossford. So the Rossford Police Department is comprised of Chief Todd Kitzler, Lieutenant Craig Reville, a detective, four sergeants, two school resource officers, eight patrol officers, an evidence room technician, and a records clerk. They can be reached by calling 419-666-0210, extension 223. And in 2022, Rossford PD responded to 8,539 calls for service. And right in these pictures, we have Officer Johnson, who's one of our school resource officers. And then if anyone was lucky enough to attend our Citizens Police Academy that they put on last fall, it was outstanding, it was very informative, and I know the citizens that attended it just loved it, and they found out a wealth of information about not only our police department, but our city services in general. So I know they're going to plan to do it again this year, so anybody that would be interested in signing up, I know that information is forthcoming, so watch our website for it. Our fire and rescue department, they are under the direction of Chief Josh Dreward and Assistant Chief Ryan Stotzenbach. There are 26 volunteer firefighters and EMS. They can be reached at 419-666-0210, extension 213. And Rossford Fire and Rescue received 1,267 calls for fire and EMS in 2022. Lots of people at home that are watching tonight, or any citizens that are in the audience tonight, lots of times they don't know who to call if they have an issue. So here's our staff, this is the rest of Team Rossford. In the municipal building here located at 133 Osborne Street is made up of accounts payable clerk Jennifer Havner, administrative assistant Stephanie Kitzler, finance director Chris Kirk, director of development Todd Odette, city administrator Allison Murray. You can reach us at 419-666-0210, and we are open 8:30 to 5:00, Monday through Friday. If you have questions on city projects or city events, marina dock rentals, or economic development, come here to 133 Osborne, here at City Hall. For some of you that may not know, the city actually has a second location now in the zoning annex at 229 Eagle Point Road. That's the Zukowski Safety Planning and Zoning Annex. Over there, you'll find zoning inspector Mark Zukowski, administrative assistant Kathy Schelt, compliance coordinator Glenn Goss. They are open from 8:00 to 4:30, Monday through Friday. You can reach them by calling 419-666-0210. And if you need a zoning permit, you have zoning questions or concerns, nuisance concerns, or issues with your trash recycling or yard waste, that's who you want to talk to over at the annex. Next up is Public Works Department, they're under the direction of Public Works Director Tyler Cole. He has seven full-time employees, we're looking to hire an eighth. The contact number there is 419-666-0210, extension 218. They are tasked with maintaining all the streets, the snow plowing, the Brian and Salt maintenance of the marina, grass mowing, storm water management, and just about everything else that's not police or fire here in the city. The Rossford Recreation Center is under the direction of Parks and Recreation Director Toby LaDesma and Assistant Parks and Recreation Director Alexa Owens. They have six part-time employees and three full-time employees, and Toby and Alexa are two of the three full-time employees. They manage a 33,000-square-foot recreational facility, they offer 32 programs for kids and adults, they have 2,500-square-foot gymnasium available for rental, they also have two nice meeting rooms that are available for rental, and they also host spring break and summer camps for your kids. So we have a wonderful asset here in Rossford with the Rossford Recreation Center. So if you aren't familiar with it, you should get to know the Rossford Rec. Next up, capital improvements between 2020 and 2023. So on March 9 of 2020, the world and the United States found themselves under the pandemic. That was the day that they declared COVID-19 a pandemic. It was also my first day here in Rossford, so all of this information is coming from March 9, 2020, today. So in 2020 and 2021, when the rest of the world slowed down and shut, the city of Rossford kept going, and we really prospered. Between 2020 and 2021, we did 7.1 million in infrastructure improvements. Some of those improvements were the reconstruction of the roads and the storm lines in the Eagle Point Colony, the reconstruction of South Colony Road between Hillside and the Colony Gates, the resurfacing of Eagle Point. We built a roundabout and a multi-use path at State Route 65, Lime City and Colony Road. We did road reconstruction on Vineyard and Gross. We had a multi-use path put in at the elementary school on Lime City Road. We did wedging and patching of Daimeling Road. We did reconstruction of Hawthorne Lane. We resurfaced Wales Road from Jenison to Glenwood. We remodeled the Zukowski Safety Planning and Zoning Annex, and we did pedestrian improvements for downtown safety. So all in all, between 2020 and 2021, we did 7.1 million in improvements for Rossford citizens. In 2022 and 2023, that number was 6,709,000. We did improvements, too, we built the crossroads parkway, the Sportsman's Drive roundabout out in the crossroads. We did storm drainage improvements on Central Hillview, Helen and Eleanor. We demolished the old Eagle Point School. We removed the old restrooms and created a sledding wall at Veterans Park. We installed a safety wall at the end of Eagle Point Road. We did repair and paving of City Lot 1. We did the repair and paving of Lime City Road. And later this summer, we will do road reconstruction of East Elm Tree. We'll do road reconstruction on Windsor Drive. We will do, we will build the Vets Park concession stand and the new pump-out station at the marina, and we will do downtown improvements to the Edward Ford Memorial Park and the patio for a total of 6,709,000. So infrastructures improvements for the citizens of Rossford total more than $13 million from 2020 to 2023. Some of the things that we're looking forward to in 2023 and 2024, Daimeling Road and Lime City Road improvements, that's a $5.2 million project. We are partnering with Wood County Port Authority, the Wood County Engineer, the Wood County Commissioners, and the Northwestern Water and Sewer District to get this road done. It's the road that runs beside Amazon, and there will also be improvements to Lime City Road along with that. And right now, the bridge south of 795 is out, and that's actually part of that project. The other investment, another large investment that we have for 2023 is, and 2024, is the roundabout at Buck and Glenwood Roads. That's 2,200,000 estimated. We are partnering with the Ohio Department of Transportation, the Wood County Port Authority, the Wood County Engineer, and Perrysburg Township. So it's really a blessing to see that we're working with these other agencies in order to get these improvements for the Rossford citizens. Capital investments at the marina between 2020 and 2023. We've done 3/4 of a million dollars of improvements. By the end of this year, we will have done 3/4 of a million dollars in improvements at the Rossford Marina. We did, installed a new kayak paddleboard launch at the Rossford Marina. We extended the docks on the sea dock by five additional feet so that they can get bigger boats in. We are building the concession restroom and shower facility at Veterans Park. We're putting a new pump-out station, and we're going to have a new kayak rental kiosk. So if you've never seen a rental kiosk, it looks about like the locker room or the lockers that you would see at a skating rink or at a bus station, only they're big enough to hold a kayak. You go on a, on your phone, you'll go onto an app, and it'll, you'll put in your credit card information, it'll give you a code, that code will unlock that locker, and you can rent a kayak by the hour. That will be installed at the marina in mid-May. So again, $752,000 by the end of this year of improvements at the marina. The next exciting topic that we have is the designated outdoor refreshment area, the DORA. A DORA is a law that allows for select areas of the city to be designated as a DORA or a designated outdoor refreshment area. In the DORA, the alcoholic beverages may be sold by licensed liquor establishments for outdoor consumption. All the surrounding communities that have put a DORA in place have seen an uptick in business, and it's actually been so successful that they've expanded their DORA options. So we are excited to bring this to downtown Rossford to increase our business and our foot traffic in the downtown area. We also have downtown development coming with the Edward Ford Memorial Park. We have some improvements, we're going to have a stage, we're going to have some pedestrian improvements. We also bought the empty lot next door to Los Toros that's across the street from the Edward Ford in order to create some more seating and patio area, because we get a lot of concern that people do not believe they have enough seating downtown for when people are at Stroll the Street and other events that we hold downtown. So we are going to create additional seating in that pocket park and pop-up. This is the 125th anniversary of the city of Rossford, and there is a 125th anniversary committee that is gathered together, and they have created a lot of events. The big event that the city is hosting is a music festival, June 16 to the 18 of 2023. It'll be a three-day festival featuring live music on Friday, June 16, and Saturday, June 17. We have a local polka band featured for Sunday, June 18, from 1:00 to 5:00. We'll have refreshment beer tents, food trucks, street vendors. We're hoping to have a pierogi eating contest where we would have like the police versus fire versus public works versus rec center, maybe versus the council, something like that. We'll have a kids' area with some inflatables, face painting, Muddy a Madonna, Spike, Cosi, and the Toledo Zoo outreach. There are opportunities for business sponsorships and volunteer opportunities available, so please contact the City Hall if you have questions or if you'd like to help with that. There is a kickoff event for the 125th anniversary, and this is the CBB, and they also have a committee that is working on the 125th anniversary. They're going to kick off that event on Sunday, May 21, at the Rossford Public Library from 1:00 to 4:00. The opening and welcome will be from our mayor Neil McKinnon. The Ford Family Journey to Rossford will be presented by Tony Knight. There'll be glass in Northwest Ohio and the Importance of the LOF Plant by Kyle Sward, who works at LOF. There is an reenactment of Edward Ford by Alex Shirelot. Tours of the library mural, musical performances, videos of LOF and Rossford history. There'll be refreshments, sale of promoted t-shirts, sale of 125th yard signs, magnets, and 125th historical magazine that will be available to the public. Again, that is Sunday, May 21, from 1:00 to 4:00 at the public library next door. May and June events for the 125th anniversary, on Tuesday, May 30, at the Stroll the Street, the Downtown Rossford Business Event, it's from 4:30 to 7:30 during Stroll the Street. There'll be a trolley, participating businesses from the Edward Ford Park, there'll be a scavenger hunt, and the Bird's Eye View Circus Performers will be down at the Ford Memorial Park, and there'll be historical photos of the downtown buildings. On Sunday, June 11, there are trolley tours through Eagle Point Colony, and I think Tom Mueller is going to give a history of the homes in the Eagle Point Colony. There is a fee for that, and you can find out about that at 100-rossford125.com. List all of these events, so if you have any questions. On July 28, it's a Friday, at 6:00 PM, there'll be a grand opening of a two, the two-day celebration this summer, the Rossford High School Gymnasium, there'll be proclamations and introduction of distinguished guests. There'll be a performance by the Ukrainian Kolomennya Dance Ensemble from Detroit, Michigan, and unveiling of the 125th anniversary glass mural using LOF glass by artist Gail Christopherson. And then on Saturday, July 29, at 10:00 AM, there'll be a parade beginning and ending at Vets Memorial Park, and they are asking people to follow along at the end of the parade, and they'll have a theme and prizes for decorating golf carts or bikes or scooters. So they want you to join in the parade, and it all ends at Vets Park. From 11:00 to 1:00, the All Saints Catholic Church will have traditional ethnic food and a drive-through if you preorder. And then from 5:30 to 7:00, there's an ethnic dinner at All Saints Catholic Church, the McLaren Center. And then finally, at 6:00 PM, it's River Fest, as we've always known it, but it's a boosted version of River Fest this year in celebration of the 125th. There'll be food trucks, a large giant birthday cake with cupcakes, kids' game tent sponsored by All Saints Church, a bird's eye view, the aerial circus performers again, bounce houses, live band, beer garden, and fireworks display by Rocket Shift Pyrotechnics. And there is a river cruise and fireworks on the Pearl, and there is a fee for that. And if you're interested in that, you can go to rossford125.com. So if you have any questions over anything, I just want to thank the mayor and council. It's been wonderful to work with you guys, and we are doing a lot of really great things, so thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Any comments or questions? Okay. Up next, we're going to do the public hearing for the consideration of designing an outdoor refreshment area. Please come up if you have anything you'd like to say, please keep it to five minutes or less, either in response or against. Mr. Verbaske.
Evening, everyone. Bill Verbaske, 317 Eagle Point Road, Rossford, Ohio. I think the DORA is a good idea. I attended the previous meeting where I was talking about the DORA. I have basically two questions. Most of my questions were answered at that previous meeting. One, Kevin, you might be able to answer this. Do I have to do anything special with the liquor control about getting a permit to sell alcohol up front? The reason I ask that is that when I expanded to my back of the building and I put a patio in, I had to go to the Liquor Control Commission to expand my permit to get the rear of the patio. Do I have to do that, or does DORA automatically include that in my liquor?
We'll get back on that. I don't know the answer to that. I have attended other DORA districts because I was trying to do my own research, and the one in Perrysburg, you could go to Swigs and Cassafarins and other places, they did sell alcohol.
The reason I ask that is that sometimes it can take a long time dealing with the liquor control.
Yeah.
So I want to make sure I'm proactive in making...
Sure.
What's done with that?
Yeah, no, we'll get that information for you, for sure.
Okay, then the only second question, I did bring this up at the previous meeting, is that when the DORA is expanded, the front of my building, I have the only piece of grass in downtown Rossford in front of my building. To expand the DORA or the outside seating, that grass needs to go away. So I would request if the city's going to do something that they pave that. Like if you go to Danny's, you go to Mo's, it's all sidewalk. So Danny's has already got his sectioned off. But for me not to infringe on the right of way, I'd have to have that middle part paved, or not paved, the concrete, so that I could extend the fence and not then have any issues with people walking around that. So I guess most people of you know my situation there. I would just ask that you look into that.
Yeah, I think you're right. I wouldn't call that green space by any means because it's so small.
Well, the problem is also, although I also appreciate the fact that you've got a picnic table down there. It actually kills the grass underneath, and it's mud when it rains and mud when it snows, so... Rearranging the picnic table, but obviously the concrete is there.
Allison, I don't see that being a big deal. Can we maybe just do that while we're doing the improvements?
So I, you can kind of look into it. Last comment, this is for audience remarks, I'm sorry, I'm not going to be here for audience remarks, but I'll just take a few seconds. Appreciate the streetlights on Hawthorne, they look nice. I think they're, what, some kind of experimental, or they're solar-type? It's nice, they sit low, but they do well. They light up Hawthorne Lane, so I appreciate, my mother appreciates all that done.
Gotcha.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else? Okay.
Erin Crawford, 544, Runes Drive, Rossford. This is neither for nor against DORA, but it relates to DORA. My children went to and currently attend Toledo School for the Arts, and when they put DORA District on Adam Street in Toledo, right across from their high school, one of the ways that they dealt with that is the DORA businesses paid for additional security around their DORA district evenings where there were school events, and I think that we should consider that here.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Mr. Watzl, any correspondence?
No correspondence, Mayor.
All right, introduction of ordinances. Is there a motion to read ordinance 2023-22 by title only?
So moved.
Did you say 23 or...? Yeah, okay.
2023-22.
You moved.
Second. All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2023-22 is an ordinance authorizing the city of Rossford to enter into a delinquent debt collection agreement with the Ohio Attorney General and declaring an emergency. This is the second reading.
Caroline?
Any reason we can't pass this tonight?
No.
Move suspension of the third reading?
Second. Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare an emergency?
Second.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt 2023-22. Echol?
Aye.
Obidorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Ruse?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2023-23 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2023-23 is an ordinance enacting Rossford Municipal Code, Chapter 1337, contractor registration. This is the first, second reading, I'm sorry.
Chris?
Economic Development and Zoning would like us to go to a third reading so we can have one more committee meeting before it's finalized, if that's okay with everyone?
Okay. Is there a motion to read ordinance 2023-24 by title only?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of reading 2023-24 by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2023-24 is an ordinance approving the purchase of sodium chloride rock salt under the agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the 2023 winter contract, 018-24. First reading.
Go ahead, Chris.
Is this okay to pass this evening, Allison? All good?
Yes, the sooner the better.
Okay, I'll move to suspend with the second and third reading of ordinance 2023-24.
Second.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to adopt ordinance 2023-24.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt 2023-24. Heben?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Obidorf?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Ruse?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2023-25 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2023-25 is an ordinance authorizing the award of a contract for the anniversary concert series and declaring an emergency. This is a first reading.
This goes ahead, go ahead, Chris.
Sorry.
No, this allows us to secure the rides and the acts and the entertainment and things like that. Go ahead.
I was going to motion to suspend with the second and third reading so we can move forward with securing all of those things for the 125th anniversary.
Second.
Is there anybody in the audience has a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? Go ahead, Chris.
What was the dollar amount for that?
I don't know total.
This ordinance is for $60,000.
Yep.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to declare ordinance 2023-25 an emergency.
Second.
Vote on the motion, all those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to adopt ordinance 2023-25.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt. Heben?
Aye.
Ruse?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Obidorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2023-26 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2023-26 is an ordinance for transfer of funds for the year beginning January 1, 2023, and ending December 31, 2023. This is a first reading.
This is a transfer of funds, this is if we didn't plan on it at the beginning of the year, but we didn't get it in the budget. This transfers the fund from the general fund over to the fund where we do all community promotion, which is where we pay all of the CBB out of, so when we pay the CBB and all the CBB events and the music festival, all of this is a transfer from the general fund to the Fund 240.
Move suspension of the second and third readings.
Second. Anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? Go ahead, Chris.
Who is that, Mayor? I need to...
Chris Segura. Address?
The fund transfer is up to $350,000.
That it?
Anyone else?
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance 2023-26. Echol?
Aye.
Obidorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Ruse?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2023-27 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2023-27 is an ordinance amending Supplementing Number 4, the annual appropriation measure for the year beginning January 1, 2023, and ending December 31, 2023, passed by ordinance 2023-10. This is a first reading.
Allison?
Oh, I'm sorry. This is to, because this was not called for in the budget, this is to appropriate, that means to put money into the budget for this year, for, from Fund 204, street construction and maintenance repair, because Tyler has been having a terrible time with traffic lights, and so we need this money in the budget to do that, as well as Toby has found that they need some recreation supplies for their soccer that was not appropriated for. So this will put this into the 2023 budget.
I'll move to suspend with the second and third reading, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Is there anyone in the audience that has a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to adopt ordinance 2023-27.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt. Heben?
Aye.
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Obendorf?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Ruse?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2023-28 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2023-28 is an ordinance amending supplementing number five, the annual appropriation measure for the year beginning January 1, 2023, and ending December 31, 2023, passed by ordinance 2023-10. This is a first reading.
This is the same money that we just talked about, the $350,000 that pays for the community promotion. It puts it into the budget.
Go ahead, Robert.
Excuse me, so does this, did I hear you correctly? This also includes the CVB?
This would be a separate.
Money.
Other than the CVB.
So the CVB was, that did go in our original. We didn't miss that. Okay, that's, that was just clarification.
Motion to suspend with the second and third reading, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Is there anyone in the audience that has a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to adopt ordinance 2023-28.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt. Heben?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Obendorf?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Ruse?
Aye.
Hey, any resolutions this evening?
None.
All right, council remarks. Mr. Toth?
I just want to wish everybody, hope everybody had a happy Easter. Hope everybody had a happy Dingus Day today, and that's all.
All right, Mr. Obendorf?
I'm just laughing at Bob here. Anyways.
I'm embarrassed, I don't even know what that means.
Dingus Day?
Yeah.
I'll look it up.
Anyways, Allison, thank you for your report. Very comprehensive, very good. Could I get a copy of that, a hard copy?
Yep.
Okay, and congratulations to all the departments. They continue to do a fantastic job. Thank you.
Caroline?
I just want to thank Chris for reading the public safety minutes into the meeting last week, and just want to remind everyone that we're changing the location to the annex instead of council chambers.
For the next meeting?
Permanently, or?
For permanently, I think.
Okay.
Okay, that's it.
Mr. Ruse?
Nothing.
Mr. Heben?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing.
All right, audience remarks. Okay, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?